Okay, we're ready. Good morning, colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Riceinger. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Welcome to the council chambers. We are here this morning to conduct our 17th voting session on amendments to City Council Bill 12-0152, which is transform Baltimore zoning. Electronic files are being made available on the city council's website. The draft amendments can be downloaded from the bill file page by inputting the following link into your web browser, A copy of the draft amendments has also been placed in the bill folder located in the Executive Secretary's office, Natanaa Austin and City Hall. It's on the fourth floor. I encourage everyone to visit the city council's website to stay updated about the bill. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the proposed amendments, page by page. We will vote on as much as we can during today's session. Public testimony will not be allowed during the voting session. City agencies may be questioned about particular amendments being discussed by the committee. We are joined by... To my far left is Councilwoman Ricky Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Directly across from Councilwoman Spector is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
Thank you.
Second to my left is Councilman Warren Branch. To my immediate left is Councilman Jim Craft, the vice chair of the committee. We're also joined by, in the audience, Angela Gibson, representing Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake. To my far right is Kara Kunst, representing the President Benoit Jack Young. To her right is Mr. John Willis, who is the attorney for the Land Use Committee. To my immediate right is Ms. Jennifer Coats, the staff person to the committee. We have Committee Communications. I'll start off. Councilwoman Clark had a list of withdrawals for the tables. And that's what we're voting on today, is the tables. So Councilwoman Clark had a list of withdrawals for the tables. Councilwoman Clark also had amendment language for wireless telecommunication in tables. That was T-602 and T-888. Councilwoman Clark had amendments for Table 16-406A. Also, Councilman Costello, amendment for Table 10-301, the use parking lots, District C5, change from blank to conditional by ordinance. We also, from Councilman Craft, amendments for Tables 10-301 and 10-401. Councilman Stokes, on behalf of Joshua Greenfield, MBIA map amendments, various properties, Huntington Avenue, Miles Avenue and Sisson Street, submitted by organizations. We have Mr. Ryan Flaniken from the Greater Remington Neighborhood Association. He had comments and amendments. Mr. Jed Weeks, board member of GRIA amendments. He supports removal of heavy retail and major automotive from the IMU category and opposes to T-611, T-612, T-614 and T-901. Yeah, Liz Cornish, executive director of Bike More. Amendment supports removal of heavy retail and major automotive from the IMU category. And she opposes T-611, T-612, T-614 and T-901. Okay. Mr. David Biedl, Mr. Philip LaCombe, Kara Harris, Ms. Robin Lewis and Mr. Benjamin Groff. All those that I announced also have submitted and related to the opinion of the other three people. What are these additions? Okay, this is for additional from the day. Mr. Al Berry, Baltimore Development Work Group, submitted by constituents. Mr. Nicholas Comititi. City residents supports removal of heavy retail and major automotive from the IMU category. Opposes all other IMU changes to the amendments, T-611, T-612 and T-90, T-612, T-614 and T-90. And also, it's Peter... Mr. Peter Mall, resident of 217 West 27th Street. Supports removal of heavy retail and major automotive from IMU category. It's the same numbers and same way with Mr. Ryan Flaniken. Okay, which part? Just this right here? These two? Okay, we just received from Councilwoman Ricky Spector, on behalf of Lisa Harris Jones, proposed amendments, T-851. Amend Table 8-301 to permit country club. It's permitted by right. That the Land Use and Transportation Committee spreadsheet indicates that the amendment has been offered by Adam Baker on behalf of BG&E. That's an error. I'm sorry. It should be read, "Adam Baker on behalf of BCC." Other considerations, sister? T-879, proposed by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. Proposes to amend Table 8-301 to change country club from conditional use C to conditional use by board approval, BMZA. And also, this one's contrary to BCC's request through T-851. And it seems that BCC opposes it. Is that it? Okay. We are now... We left... We finished on T-444. We are now on T-45. And that's page 11 of 27. Jennifer Coats, Mary Pat. We're ready to go on the tables. So Councilwoman Clark, we're starting with T-45, which is your amendment. It's page 10, Table 10-301. Yeah, warranted, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we passed a motion adopting all the splits on the community gardens and community managed open space, right?
Yeah.
Didn't we do that?
Yes.
I would like to thank you very much. Basically, throughout this code, where community managed open space is listed, the uses will be divided into two. Community managed open space garden, which is permitted across all districts. And community managed open space farm, which is CB, conditional by zoning board across all districts. I'd like to make a motion.
We already did that.
You did it. Oh, good.
Okay. So thank you, Councilwoman Craft. We've been voted here. We voted on all that. We worked with all the community gardens, didn't we?
I'll tell you.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so now we are on T-46.
Yes, sir.
This is Table 10-301. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, I have a couple recommendations to make in this section. T-46, first of all, in... This is in the commercial use tables. In the C1 slash, C1VC, animal clinics, which is listed as permitted, I would move to leave it blank in this district, in C1, which is the same as C1VC.
Okay. You making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Do we have a second?
No second. That means it doesn't want.
No second. Motion fails.
Next.
The next one?
Is ATM. I would like to move to add ATM freestanding as a principal use as a category in the commercial districts. Because that's a coming trend. And in my own district experience, can cause problems when people want to locate it at a busy intersection where it blocks view of traffic, etc. So in other words, it becomes... It's not a small thing. And it's not always accessory, which would be on the grounds of a bank that it serves. It's a... I'd like to add it as a principal use that is conditional certainly in C1, C1VC and C2. That would be... And it would be permitted every place else.
So are you moving on that?
That's a motion, yes.
Okay, do we have a second? Councilman Craft, you got a question on a motion?
So you'd be putting in a new category here
Yes.
of ATM freestanding, right? And if it were in a C1, a C... CVC or C2?
Yeah.
It would be... It would require?
Zoning board approval.
Well, if it's in a shopping center or a strip mall, and it's part of an overall plan, why would it have to have zoning board approval?
Well, in that case, it would be an accessory use.
She has one there.
Yeah. Maybe freestanding in some other area from where the bank is or whatever.
Well, yes. If you want to consider it that way, you could say it would be principal if it's not located on the grounds
Right.
of the bank.
Right.
It serves.
Yeah.
Here's the... The issue is... It's worthy of our consideration because it's a growing issue. Banks are closing in our neighborhoods, unfortunately. And they're leaving behind their ATMs. Now, on Green Mountain Avenue, for example, they wanted to put a big ATM... They closed the bank, Bank of America. And then they wanted to put a big ATM at a busy intersection, a block away, on a corner. And it was actually... I don't think it was ever turned down by the zoning board, but it was... It got to be so contentious that they didn't approve it because it was a safety hazard. And there was really no way to get your hands around what rights a citizen has, a neighborhood has, if somebody's proposing to solo an ATM machine away from its bank. And I think that's happening more and more. I mean, unfortunately, I see the substitution of ATMs for full-service banks.
Well, you know, in my district, and I think Councilman Costello talked about this when we had this discussion before. My folks don't use cash. I mean, they... You know, the ATMs are what they use now. And, you know, every time somebody wants to put in an ATM, I don't know that it has to go in to the board for approval.
Not if they're a bank. I'm sorry. I thought... I don't have an ATM card, but I thought you went to an ATM to get cash.
Well, you can make your bank deposit.
Any business transaction.
Yeah, you can... Right. You can do all your business there.
Why would you do it?
So it's convenient to, you know... You don't need to go into a bank. There's a place you can do all your banking business, so...
Okay, so... And you can't do it online, I guess?
Well, you can't, if I may. It's not just Monday through Friday, but even in my district, Saturday or Sunday, you go to an ATM machine to withdraw or make a payment. Am I correct?
Right.
So you finish?
Well, I'm not saying... Look, I'm not saying there shouldn't be these things. I'm saying that, given the trend, I think we should have some kind of review of when they're going out as a principal use, not connected to their bank.
I understand. So you made a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? There's no second. Motion fails. Councilwoman, what's the next one? Bail bondsmen or...
It is. Okay. C1, C1VC. Excuse me, just a second. Is... The amendment I'm suggesting is this, that in a C1/C1 Village Center district, it be left blank. That is, it is not... A bail bond establishment is not... You can't get it. You can't go to the zoning board, the city council. You can't get one. And in C2, these are both Main Street-level commercial operations. And in C2, you would... It wouldn't be permitted, but you would have to go to the zoning board. This is an issue that I'm sure is raised in every Main Street kind of local neighborhood. And I think it would... I would hope somebody would second my motion and consider this banning it, in effect, from C1, C1VC, and making it zoning board conditional in C2. These are the neighborhood, local, commercial centers.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Craft. Riceinger votes, yes, Craft.
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is yes. Clark?
Approved.
Clark is yes. Henry is absent. He called. He's on his way. Sharon Green Middleton had a prior commitment. She's going to be late. So she is absent. Councilman Mosby is absent. So we have four yes with three absent. Motion passed. What's the last one on T-46? Is that?
Oh, a banquet hall. I'm sorry. I didn't even see that. My apologies. Yes, right now, a banquet hall. We all know what we're talking about. In a C2, again, that neighborhood commercial, requires zoning board approval on the draft. I am... I'd like to make a motion that it would be by city council ordinance, a banquet hall in a C2 neighborhood location.
You making a motion?
I made it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Craft. Riceinger votes, yes, Craft. Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry is absent. Middleton is absent. And Mosby is absent. So the motion passed with four yes with three absent. Now we are on...
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Middleton is not here yet. These next two motions are from two of her community associations. She... I know she's on the way. Can we defer till she arrives?
So you make a motion to defer T-49, T-50?
I do. I'd like to move to defer until Councilwoman Middleton arrives.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a problem. I don't vote. But I also have a country club in my district, so that's why I'm here.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Do we have a second to defer?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Craft. Are those to defer? All those to defer, say aye.
You don't have these sheets.
Those to pro, say nay. The ayes have it. T-49, T-50 is deferred.
No, no, I'm going...
We're now on T-51. That's still Table 10-301. Councilwoman Clark?
Mr. Chairman, this is not a new issue from me too, but this is the moment where I would like to ask your approval. I would like to delete drive-through facility as a principal use category and make it an accessory use category. I'd like to delete drive-through facility as a principal use. There is no such use.
It's not a principal use. It's conditional.
In the drafting that we used for this code, it's very clear in the front that we're not doing accessory uses. So we pulled out drive-through facility because it goes with many different things. So, you know, you can have a restaurant with a drive-through or a bank with a drive-through or a pharmacy with a drive-through. And oftentimes, the base use is fine, but the drive-through aspect is a problem. So by pulling it out and taking the drive-through aspect to a conditional use, that allows you to say the base use is permitted, the restaurant, the bank or whatever, but that there would be a board review of the drive-through. And that's the reason for doing that.
So my question is that if they want to do a Walgreen, okay? And a new Walgreen, so they could build the Walgreen, but they'd have to come in and have a conditional use for it.
For the drive-through aspect. So they'd be guaranteed the approval. So the way it is in our current code, you have pharmacy and then pharmacy with drive-through. And then you have... So it's a little bit of a clumsier approach. So that's the reason we pulled it out and always made it conditional. So there's never a, you know, presumption that you can automatically do a drive-through. They, you know, they cause traffic congestion. They need to be reviewed and have some sort of hearing. And we also realized that, you know, given changes, right now, we have restaurant drives-through or, you know... There may be some new kind of drive-through coming up. You don't want to have to amend the whole code, but you could just... The drive-through aspect would always have the public approval.
Is that conditional by BMZA or?
As drafted, yes.
Mr. Chair?
You gotta use the microphone, Councilwoman. We'll be televised.
Mr. Chair, when we talk about... There's even the car wash drive-throughs now. And so that review is really important by the BMZA because when you're in a gas station... I mean, I know that cars are coming from all directions. So it does need the review. I agree. And it seems that most appropriate would be the way it's been recommended.
Well, Mr. Chair, may I say this?
Yes.
Here's the fatal flaw here with this. When we're approving the principal use to which a drive-through is accessory, we no longer know what principal uses are allowed to have drive-through as a component. In other words...
Wouldn't matter.
It does matter because...
Well, as drafted, all the principal uses in C2, C3 or C4 could be considered for drive-through.
So you could have a drive-through for a bail bond house. Or you could have a drive-through for a cleaning establishment or...
I think if the council was interested... I mean, and we'd have to go back to the standards. You can see that the drive-through has standards in 14-311. And if there are concerns about those particular standards, I think they'd be best handled there. In other words, it says there in 14-311, the... Right now, the uses eligible for a drive-through, it's page 218, as drafted are restaurants with carryouts, financial institutions and retail goods establishments without alcohol. So if the committee wanted to expand that list, I think the place to do it would have been in 14-311. Because it's very clearly stated which ones.
Well, we already spoke to that. It's okay. So Councilwoman Clark?
I have a motion on the floor.
You got a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion fails. Lack of a second on T...
It's no big deal.
...T-51. Now we are on T-52. Councilwoman Clark, this is, again, Table 10-301. Motor vehicle?
Yes.
Rental establishments?
Yes, sir. T-52, motor vehicle rental establishment, fully enclosed in a C2. It is a permitted use. I am recommending that it be left blank, that not be permitted or conditional. I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Are we... Is this three separate?
No, it's... No. Here's how it reads.
Okay, I got it. Now, I'm just... I'm just saying you got three.
It's one... I've got three motions here.
Let's stick with the first one. So you're making a motion on motor vehicle rental establishment?
Yes, sir, I am. Going in C2, going from... Going... I'm sorry.
From...
From permitted to...
Blank.
Blank.
Okay. You making a motion? Do we have a second?
I have a motion.
Do we have a second? Motion fails.
Okay, so just...
Okay, now, Councilwoman Clark, we're on the second. The second...
Now, here we go. We are now in neighborhood commercial. Motor vehicle service and repair minor, fully enclosed structure. In a C2, it's permitted. I would leave it blank.
Okay, it's motor vehicle service and repair. Okay, do you make a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion fails for a second. Now we're on the third. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, sir. Motor vehicle service and repair minor with outdoor storage of vehicles in C2. It's permitted. It's recommended permitted. I am asking that it be left blank. So here we are in a neighborhood commercial area like Green Mountain Avenue, like Lauraville and Hamilton, like Hamden, etc. All right. Like that.
Condition... Where it's C2.
Well, I mean, you can recommend an amendment if you'd like, but I have a recommendation. I'm happy to accept amendments. We're on...
It's currently conditional.
I think that you have...
Fifty-two.
On that one... I think that you have, on that one, you're saying C2, that's not permitted, that's, C2 is conditional by BMZA. Am I correct?
Correct.
And you say you want to leave it?
Well, then, I apologize for my error, and I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I'm happy with that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
What, to withdraw?
Withdraw, say aye.
I don't, yeah, no, I don't. All right, so...
Ayes have it.
Aye. So, that's withdrawn.
I have one on this, I have one on this page.
That was T-52?
Yeah, and that's like over now.
Mr. Chairman?
Can we just stop for a minute, so you know what's going on?
We are joined by Councilman Nick Mosby, and also Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right here, it's in the packet.
We had packet?
It's in the communication packet, here.
Okay, so, there are votes from your neighborhood, it says Craft. Here it is. So, we'll come back.
Yeah, I kinda lost a couple of C1 VC votes, but nothing.
Yeah, we finished eleven.
So, now, we're on twelve.
So, it's on twelve, but we're gonna do, we're gonna do...
Craft?
Except that's before we go.
His amendment. Yeah, I, but we didn't, I, I asked them to hold them because, your neighborhood association.
Okay, we're, we're now, everyone's attention, so we're on the same page. We're now on, it's table amendments proposed by Councilwoman Craft. Councilwoman Craft, you have three amendments, correct?
Yes, and the first one...
Oh, I'm sorry, where?
Is all my committee members have a copy of this.
They're in the packet from today, the correspondence packet. And they're in the packet.
Wait a minute, let's, wait till we get there. Craft, it's, it's, here. Yeah, he's in here somewhere.
Okay. So, this is on table 10301, on page 11?
10301, page 11.
In entertainment live standalone establishment, would amend it from blank in a C1E to permitted in a C1E. This is a live entertainment zone. If you wanted to, if you had a building and you wanted to turn it into a theater, or a dance studio, or something like that, it wouldn't, under the present zoning that we're proposing, it wouldn't be permitted. Makes no sense in a live entertainment zone.
Okay, so...
So, my motion is to, on C1E, on use entertainment live standalone establishment, to make C1E permitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is yes. Clark? Clark is yes. Henry is absent. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby? Mosby is, you say yes?
Yes.
Yes. So, we have one, two, three, four. We got six yes, with one absent. Motion passes. Remember, passes amendment number two, Councilwoman Craft?
We're not there yet.
Oh, it's a different one?
Yeah, that's a different table.
Oh, okay, all right. What we can, what we can do, we can, Councilwoman Clark, despair with me, made the recommendation. We are going to, we're gonna go back to page 11 of 27, and this is T-49, table 10301, on page, yes, 1011.
Oh, that's, we are going back. Oh, 49, yeah.
Medical dental and restaurant uses, Winhurst Improvement Association, I think, is that Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes, it is, the Winhurst Improvement Association. They have an amendment to change the C1 and C1 VC medical dental clinic and restaurant uses from permanent to conditional.
Second.
This is, Council, can you speak into the microphone?
Me?
Yeah.
Second. I'm seconding T-49 inclusive of both changes.
Councilwoman Clark, second.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Middleton, seconded by Councilwoman Clark. Just give me a few seconds. Thank you, Councilwoman, for the clarification. So, moved by Councilwoman Middleton, seconded by Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Right Singer votes yes. Councilwoman Craft?
Yes.
Councilwoman Craft is yes. Councilwoman Branch? Councilwoman Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilwoman Henry is absent. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilwoman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mosby is yes. Passes with five yes, with one absent. Now, we are on the...
It's the same one.
T-51.
Yeah, so that's, you can withdraw that.
T-50.
Yeah, is it exactly the same? It is?
Um, I think T, I'd like to probably withdraw T-50, because it's the exact, I think it's the exact same thing.
Okay.
T-50 is the same as T-49, but I didn't, T-49 has two uses. Did the committee vote for both? Well, I thought I only heard medical dental as one. The other one's restaurant.
There, I, Mr. Chairman, I, in my second, I specified that it was, because it was stated in its entirety, I stated that I was seconding in its inclusive, inclusivity of both actions. That's what I'm saying.
Does the committee?
Yes.
The restaurants means that on Main Street, it will be very difficult to do a restaurant. I just want the committee to understand. I, I only heard the one. This makes it conditional, a restaurant a conditional use in a C1, which is your Main Street districts.
That's what we want.
I'm not sure that that was understood. I thought it was just the medical dental.
I move to reconsider on that.
Complaining, reiterate what you just stated, so we can...
And maybe I heard it wrong, but I thought I heard only the medical dental. But, just so the committee understands, I see two uses here. Medical dental clinic and restaurant. And I'm not sure that making restaurants conditional in C1, which is your Main Street districts, was the intention of the committee.
I know, it's not, I need you to be here to remind me of that.
I mean, the committee may want to consider, though it would complicate the tables, in separating C1 from C1 Village Center. I'm noticing that the supporters of this amendment are communities that have C1 Village Center, not C1. The tables are written together, but it could be separated.
Centers.
C1s are Main Streets. Otherwise, we're making every restaurant with a Main Street condition.
Yeah, like, like Italianos, they'd have to come in front of...
Okay, so we'll keep it C1 VC.
We need a motion reconsideration.
I move to reconsider.
Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Mosby. All those who favor the reconsider, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion to reconsider, pass.
I move the amended bill, I mean, the amended amendment.
This is T, what, 49?
T-4, uh, T-49. Yeah, taking out C1.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Not for medical dental clinic.
Not for medical dental, just for restaurant.
Just for restaurant.
Just for restaurant.
Okay, I'm sorry, we gotta go back.
So, let me go back.
Let's go back.
Amendment to change the C1 and, C, uh, mental and, C1 and C1 VC metal...
Restaurants.
And dental clinic and restaurant use C1 VC from permitted to conditional.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, moved by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Middleton, seconded by Councilwoman Craft?
Yes.
Okay, all those who favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Okay, now, we're going into, is T-50 the same, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't... That was withdrawn? Okay, thank you. We are now on T-51. No, no, we're going back, I'm sorry. Okay, we need a, motion was made by Councilwoman Middleton to withdraw T-50. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All, all those who favor to withdraw T-50, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and T-50 is withdrawn. We are joined by Councilwoman Bill Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, everyone, we are now on T-57. Councilwoman Clark, we're still on table 10301.
I'm sorry, what number are we on?
We are on page... It's T-57.
Members of the committee, Mr. Chairman?
Page 12.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I have only one remaining amendment at, on T-57 that is not redundant with things that have already been approved. It is the top one, in which I am making a motion to amend, so that parking lots, principal, as principal uses, and parking structures as principal uses, in a C2 district, require zoning board approval. Right now, they are permitted uses, we're talking about parking lots and parking garages are permit, are recommended as permitted in C2, which is half of what your Main Streets are. Usually, there's C1, C2, about half and half, all over the city.
Mr. Chairman?
There.
Oh. In further consideration, I think we are comfortable with the Councilwoman's amendment, as it is somewhat atypical to get a principal use of parking structure or parking lot, and it is not too onerous for that to go to the zoning board. And it would be clear with the wording, principal use there, that the lot, the accessory lot for the businesses would be fine. This would only be if you were doing a standalone, and...
That's correct. It's not about, you're building a building and you got a garage in it. It's about freestanding, principal use.
It's like your one in Federal Hill, or something like that. I think that's okay.
Second.
So, moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Craft. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Councilman Henry? Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby? Mosby is yes?
No. He said no.
No?
Yeah, he said yes.
Oh, you said yes. I thought you said no.
We have seven, that's okay, seven yes, so, T-57 moves. We're now on T-58. We're back on table 10301, page 12. This is Park, Baltimore Parking Association. Anyone move this?
I'd like to move it, because it represents what our colleague, let me make sure. Our colleague Eric Costello, if this is conditional by city council ordinance, that is the amendment he seeks. So, in C5, instead of saying you can't have a lot, it says, okay, you can have them, but you gotta get a city council ordinance as a conditional use in C5. That is what our colleague has requested, and it makes sense. I'd like to move that.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark. Do I have a second?
This is Eric.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. Is there a question on the motion, or?
Craft, Councilwoman Craft?
This is the same amendment that I think we discussed, and the Councilwoman Craft asked to defer for further study earlier. This is the notion that there'd be no new parking lots in downtown.
Yeah, right, I know, I know, but, let me say, I don't think we should be, in, this is my personal opinion, I don't think we should be building any more parking lots in downtown. I think for, for a couple reasons. One, I think it encourages people to continue to build car, build, bring their cars downtown, and I think it will slow us down in finding alternative means. We still will be focusing on moving cars rather than moving people. And secondly, we have so many places where people have knocked buildings down and put parking lots, and the parking lots have stayed there for years and years and years, and it's never been developed. But, that having been said, the councilman who represents this area, which I don't, wants that parking lot to be conditional by ordinance. So, I'm gonna defer to the councilman that's there.
Uh, Councilwoman Middleton?
Um, remember, we're dealing with the whole, this, these amendments and things citywide, and I have, I can just think of one area that has troubled parking, and we would love, in fact, there's plans for more parking lots, and that's the Pimlico Sinai Hospital Community Area.
This wouldn't affect those areas. This is only for C5. No, but the amendment only affects C5.
It's this amendment.
Right. In your area, Councilwoman Middleton, parking lot principal use in those commercial areas is permitted.
Right.
Other than the amendment that you just voted on, which made it conditional to the board in C2, in C3 and in C4, it is permitted. So, C5 is only mapped to downtown. So, this amendment... So this amendment, to make it conditional by ordinance, would only affect downtown.
So, okay, so, are you talking, Councilwoman?
And it does go into Harbor East, Councilman Kraft, so it goes a little bit into the first district.
We have a, we have a motion by Clark, seconded by Henry. White singer votes yes. Councilman Kraft?
I will pass on this one.
Councilman Kraft abstains. Councilman Branch?
And this is, um, conditional, uh, ordinance.
C five.
C five, downtown.
The councilman of that district.
Wants it.
Wants it. So I support the councilman of that district.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Branch, yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes. Councilman Henry?
I'm gonna take a moment to explain my vote, which is that I'm going to vote yes in favor of the amendment for councilmatic courtesy at the request of Councilman Costello. In principle, I agree completely with Councilman Kraft, but as long as we continue to district all of downtown into one city council district, I think this is gonna continue to be a problem. So I'm taking the opportunity to put it onto the record that the next time redistricting comes up, we should seriously look at some way to either chop up downtown among multiple councilpeople so that we don't have this issue in the future, or perhaps we should have more at-large councilpeople who could balance out the needs of the entire city versus the needs of one individual council district.
So...
Thank you.
Not hearing that bill today.
So, so for clarity, Councilman Henry, you support Councilman Costello, and you agree with Councilman Kraft, and you vote yes. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
No.
Councilman Mosby, no. Councilman Mosby, no. Let me get this right, we got one, two, three, four, five yes, one no, and one abstain. Motion passes on T fifty?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, T fifty-eight. Now we are on T six hundred. Table ten three oh one.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna withdraw this. I have no idea what it means.
You withdraw? Okay, Councilwoman Clark, you withdraw? Do I have a second?
Second.
I also have no idea what it means, so I'm...
So you, you second the withdrawal?
I don't.
Okay, all those with favor to withdraw T six hundred say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. T six hundred is withdrawn.
Yeah, I don't know where it came from.
We are now on T six oh one, table...
Oh, this is a big one.
Still ten three oh one, um... Where's this at? Where's this at? Just bear with me for a minute, this is...
It's a lot of different, um...
I think you should break them individually, vote individually.
What's your page, eleven?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I am withdrawing maintenance drug dispensary clinic. I was...
Okay, I'm sorry.
On this list, which has been grouped together under T six oh one, is something called a maintenance drug dispensary clinic. I really enjoyed defining it and naming it, but I, I think it's not gonna fly, so I'm withdrawing it.
Okay. So, Councilwoman Clark, in the entirety of T six oh one, you withdraw?
No.
No, just that...
No. I'm withdrawing the one, there's a number of...
Okay, I got it.
Okay.
Okay, so, but the rest, okay, do I have a motion? Second, yeah, Councilman Henry?
I wanted to ask if the sponsor of the amendment would accept a friendly amendment to the check cashing establishment portion.
Well, we haven't voted on...
I'm withdrawing two other things.
Oh, do you, well, I'll...
Yes, I will.
Well, I mean, but I, can I, shouldn't I amend it before we vote on it?
No, we gotta, we go, we're going one by one.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're voting, no, withdraw, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
You withdraw.
Mr. Chairman, we, based on the vote we just took, the Wyndhurst vote, I'd like to also withdraw, oh, there's my phone. From this list, medical dental clinic...
Yes.
And restaurant, which is near the bottom. So basically, I'm withdrawing those two because they're, they become, you know, they're moot. We already voted on them.
Okay, so you're withdrawing three, and maintenance, medical and dental, and restaurant. Councilman Kraft?
Yes, sir.
Just a question, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Right after medical and dental clinic, it says outdoor dining, personal services, restaurant, you would be deleting restaurant off of that also, right?
No, it's two down.
You have restaurant twice. You have restaurant twice.
Well, golly day, um, is that how it's...
No, that's not a use, those three, so that should be broken down.
Yeah.
I, so, I'm sorry, I just got transposed in the, um, putting it on these lists, um...
So wherever restaurant...
Uh, yeah, I'll take C, yeah, I'll take restaurant out of there, sure.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't look at that carefully when I...
Let's do this, let's, let's do, you make a motion to withdraw those other three, the maintenance, the drug dispensary, dispensary clinic.
I got it.
The medical dental, let me finish, medical dental and restaurant. We'll do those three, then we'll go back to the other ones, and the one where we're gonna delete the restaurant, we'll do that separate, okay?
Oh, okay, I, I see, yes.
So we have a motion on the floor for those three. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Those three are withdrawn. Now we go, Councilwoman Clark, we go to, we're going to the top, correct, body art establishment?
Okay, this is a list, um, and here we go. This is all in the commercial districts, and this one is a motion to, um, lead, to move from conditional, zoning board conditional, to blank, which means no conditions, no permissions. The body art establishment in a C one slash C one VC district. So it would go from the rec, from the draft zoning board approval to a blank, not permitted at all, you can't get it.
Councilman, okay, so Councilwoman Clark moves the first one. Is there a question on the motion?
I have a question on the motion. Would the sponsor accept a friendly amendment to make it conditional by ordinance instead of blank? That's worse?
Yeah, I think that's worse. If you wanna vote again, if you wanna vote against it, vote against it, yeah.
Councilwoman Clark moves. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? No second?
No second. All right.
Move by, with this, because of a second. Okay, the next one is...
I'd like to make a motion that I will accept a friendly amendment on.
Yes.
Uh, what's the friendly amendment?
The, for the check cashing establishment, what I was going to suggest was, um, and instead of leaving it blank in C one, C one VC, make it conditional by ordinance in all C one through C threes.
Through C threes?
Yeah. I mean, frankly, I would make it blank in all three because I hate them, and I don't think that we should be allowing the proliferation. But if, um, if there's some good reason at some point for somebody to have one, they can make that case individually to the entire community and to the councilperson.
I, I, I hear you, Councilman, it's just, I know in my district that there are certain communities in my district that need to go to a checking establishment, so I really can't support that, but, but is there a motion?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold it. He's, he's proposing something that is less restrictive than what I'm proposing, um, so in, in, I, I'm saying to prohibit them in C one...
I get it.
Just in the C one and C one VC district, um, to just basically not have them there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I, I, I'll, I'll speak at a little bit of length on this. We just had, at our council meeting this week, Sarah Johnson from the Baltimore Cash Campaign here to talk to us about the importance of increasing the financial literacy of our residents. One of the aspects of that is to get more people to use legitimate financial institutions as a safer and better place to keep their money. And I understand that there are communities where there has been not just a traditional distrust or fear of banks, but where the banks themselves have not been particularly good at reaching out to the communities. The fault in that lies in our working, you know, our, we should be working harder to make the banks work with the communities. We should not be allowing the proliferation of these, frankly, predatory businesses that charge incredible rates for cashing checks, and they simply profit off of our lowest income residents and then take that money out of the community. So I, if, if it, if it's, if an individual councilperson feels that their community is actually well-served, conditional by ordinance allows that to happen, but if a councilperson and their community does not wanna see the spread of these institutions, conditional by ordinance allows us to protect our commercial quarters and our communities.
I mean, it's already going through in front of BMZA, correctly?
Right.
Correct. As drafted, um, check cashing, and this was based on comments we received in an earlier draft that led to this, 'cause we previously had check cashing just treated as normal retail. It was pulled out as an individual item and suggested to be conditional to the board in all zones. So it's treated the same across the board from C one to C five.
Any, any question on the motion? Councilwoman, Councilman Kraft?
I mean, the other thing is, you're gonna make it conditional by ordinance in a C one, or C one VC, and then you're gonna have it conditional by the board in a C one E. So you can have...
Oh, I'm sorry, I, my, my, my friendly amendment was to make it conditional by ordinance in all C one through C threes. Anything that might be on a commercial corridor.
Okay, so... Council, you, do you accept a friendly amendment, do you accept a friendly amendment from Councilman Henry on your bill, on your amendment?
Will you vote for it in the bill if we do, if we...
Yeah, yeah. I rarely offer friendly...
Okay, so... Yes, right.
So, one through three would be city council.
Yes, that would be...
I think you said C three.
You said across the board.
No, 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 just C one through C three.
Okay, all right. So, Councilwoman... So, Councilwoman Clark, you accept Councilman Henry's amendment, friendly amendment?
Well, just, I'm trying to get my votes together over here, um, so, can you vote for that? Well, I don't know. Let me find out what...
From where?
We're looking at, we're just looking at, yes, this is important. Excuse me. Check cashing, let's see what they're doing here. Check cashing, it's, it's CB, it's conditional by the board, um, all the way across the board. I was just trying to take it out of C one, C one VC, but I'll accept it as an amendment. That's gonna make it conditional by ordinance, uh, through the three. You wanna, would you accept a friendly amendment from my colleague?
Bill, why wouldn't we just do conditional use by ordinance through all of them, through all commercial spaces?
Conditional, conditional by ordinance in all C districts?
Correct.
I would be philosophically...
I mean, it seems like we're protecting the larger places and...
I, I, I'm, I'm okay, I would...
For the same issues, that we have issues of placing it in the larger places, we're saying we're comfortable in just throwing it in communities.
Nick, I'm, I have no problem with that. I generally don't do, I don't generally offer those suggestions if I don't have any in my district. I have C one through C three, I don't have any C four or C five, but I have no objection to that, I'm happy to accept that as an amendment.
I just think the motivation of us doing it, C one through C three, we should just do it across the board.
Sure, all right. Um, so, I, I will accept a friendly amendment to my friendly amendment. Will the sponsor accept?
I'm ready to accept the, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, to move conditional, uh, I'd like to move that across all conditional, um, uses from C one, C one VC through C five, um, move to adopt conditional by ordinance across the board.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Council, Councilman Henry. White singer votes no. Kraft?
No.
Kraft, no. Branch? Branch, no. Clark?
Yes.
Clark, yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry, yes. Middleton?
No.
Middleton, no. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby, yes. So we have three yes with four no, motion fails. That's, okay, Councilwoman Clark?
Okay, wait a minute.
Now we are on, what, entertainment indoor?
Uh, yeah, wait a minute.
Where we at? Where's this?
Yeah. Let's see, um, entertainment indoors. Um, it is now listed as conditional by zoning board in C one, C one VC. I am asking in this motion that we leave it blank in C one, C one VC, and that in C two, again, these are your neighborhood commercial areas, your Main Streets, et cetera, that it go from permitted, um, to, uh, conditional by the zoning board. Do I have a second?
Would the, would the sponsor be open to a friendly amendment to make it conditional by ordinance rather than blank?
May I just explain the use? Just, again, back to the definition, your entertainment indoor is your movie theater, your live theater, that sort of thing. It expressly prohibits, does not include, the live entertainment or indoor recreation. That is the breakdown of the uses. So it, essentially, indoor entertainment is a movie theater or similar, and we thought that was an appropriate use on Main Street.
I don't have a second, so, you know, we can talk, no, I'm not gonna withdraw, I'm just, oh, I see what you're saying.
You, you withdraw?
Well, when I don't have a second, it just falls down. I mean, I don't, I'm not withdrawing, I didn't get a second.
Fails on lack of a second.
Thank you.
That is the entertainment. Now we are on health center, Councilwoman Clark.
Okay, everybody, okay, everybody, health center.
Health center.
I'm asking that it go from permitted in the Main Street areas to blank, and that in C three, four, and five, from permitted to conditional by ordinance. Can I get a second?
Councilman, Councilman Kraft?
If it doesn't have a second, then I'm fine. I don't need to say anything.
Okay, well, second. Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilman...
I don't need to say anything if there's no second, I don't wanna talk just for the sake of talking.
Yeah.
Again, to clarify, a health center is your basic workout space, your gyms, your, you know?
That was my question.
Exactly.
Okay, that's, okay, that's what, and that's what I wanted to hear.
It's all in the definitions.
It's not a healthcare center.
It is not healthcare, it is a gym.
In that case, if a health center is not a healthcare center...
It's a gym.
If it's a fitness center...
Fitness, it's gym.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, that works. Okay, Councilwoman Clark?
Wait a minute, let me just make sure...
Councilwoman Clark, withdraw, seconded by Councilman Kraft.
Wait a minute.
All those in favor say aye.
Excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Could we stop?
I thought you said you withdraw, so go ahead. You have the floor, Councilwoman.
I am looking for, I don't want to leave this because I'm talking about, I use... I am looking for, I don't want to leave this because I'm talking about, I used the wrong term, and I used the wrong term. I didn't mean health fitness center. I meant, and it's in here, and so I would like you to consider, health, well, okay, health center is not, alright, so it's, so we don't have any healthcare centers listed in this commercial code then, right? I, could we just stop and look and make sure? So, let me see.
So it's your verbiage. So we, you're saying the health center. Can Planning help me with this definition?
Yes, and I think there was an agency correction here, but a health center is a fitness facility. It is the broad definition with the bicycles or the, you know, the gym floor, that sort of thing, the weight room. On that same page 31, under definitions, there is a healthcare clinic, but that use was not, it was defined but not used, and instead we use the medical. So I think, and, and I thought there was an amendment to delete the definition healthcare clinic, but, because it's not a use.
There is no, so, so there is not in this code healthcare clinic or such a thing. So you're using medical slash dental as a stand-in for that.
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
And we have, what did we do with them? We already did something with them.
We already voted on that, right?
Okay, well then I will withdraw, and I would like the record to show and the definition to reflect that a health center is a fitness center.
Okay, so you're gonna, I got it, so you're gonna withdraw this?
I'll move to withdraw this request.
We have, we had a second by Councilman Henry, is that correct? All those in favor to withdraw say aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the, that is withdrawn. Now we're going Councilwoman Clark. We are on the outdoor dining, personal service.
They are two separate uses. I would suggest you discuss them separately.
Outdoor dining, will we have?
I would, I'll withdraw personal service from this definition, stick with outdoor dining, and so I'd make a motion to remove the word, words, personal service. And in that definition, the word restaurant, and the word, and then underneath it...
Okay, Councilwoman Clark, let's go back. Let's go back, just hear me out. You had three, you had outdoor dining, personal service, and restaurants. Are you withdrawing personal service and restaurants and just dealing with outdoor dining?
I am from, from that outdoor dining sentence.
Okay.
But also from underneath it, where there's a separate personal services, alright?
Alright, but I need, what I need from you, let's back settle.
I know you need a motion. Withdraw.
You withdraw personal service and restaurant, correct?
Yes, from...
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Clarification. She's withdrawing personal services from between outdoor dining and restaurant, and she's also withdrawing personal services establishment.
Right.
The one below it, that's...
Underneath it.
And she's staying with outdoor dining.
And I'm seconding that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Now we're left just with what, outdoor dining? Councilwoman Clark?
Well, yes, and I have one that you can barely see, that I will tell you what it means in a minute. Outdoor dining, I would like to move in the C1, C1 VC, and C2 neighborhood districts, that it move from a permitted to a zoning board conditional use.
Okay, so Councilwoman Clark makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. Right singer votes, no. Councilman Kraft?
No.
Councilman Kraft, no. Councilman Branch? Councilman Branch, no. No. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
No.
Councilwoman Middleton is no. Councilman Mosby?
No.
Councilman Mosby is no. Motion fails, five to two. Now...
There is, at the bottom.
There's, there's one here, Councilwoman Clark, just hear me out. The other ones removed, we withdrew, but all the way on the bottom, the lines are crossed, it says retail goods establishment with alcohol sales.
Yes.
And that's all that's on there. So could you elaborate?
I can, because it just slipped off the, I mean, it slipped off. It says, retail goods establishment with alcohol. In C1 and C1 VC, move from being zoning board conditional to city council ordinance conditional. So from CB to CO in, and in C2, move from permitted to zoning board conditional. This is like, really, people need some warning and notice and a voice.
Can I ask a question?
Councilwoman Kraft?
Um, what is the, Laurie, what's the definition of, is this like a carryout liquor store?
It's essentially a liquor store. It's everything from, it's basically your A licenses. It's your Bin 604, it's your, you know, Chesapeake Winery, it's...
Yeah, but I mean, it can be Chesapeake Winery, but it can also be Joe's Liquors.
Right, right. In other words, when we define retail goods, you see them on the chart, parallel, in order to pull out liquor stores and treat them separately, we made the two uses, retail goods with alcohol sales and without.
This is important to people, especially given the current state of the liquor board.
Okay, that's, Councilman Henry, as the floor? Just, as a clarification, would this also include, I'm trying to remember the liquor board's terminology for, or actually, no, the zoning terminology for a BD7, where you have a, something that allows both on-premise and takeaway, that would not...
That is defined as a tavern.
That's defined separately as a tavern.
Yes. We tried to, in this code, follow the state rules, maybe differently than the own liquor board, and separately define the liquor stores on a land use perspective from the taverns.
So, okay, I'm sorry, yield back to Councilman Kraft.
Yeah, Councilwoman, would you move C1E into that also?
Into, I'm sorry, into what?
Into your...
Oh, C1E.
Right.
Oh, yes, of course, Councilman. C1E is always welcome.
How about, how about C3?
And C3 is one of my favorites. So I'd like to, which one are you looking for, though? I've got, I've got C1 moving into city council ordinance approval, and C2 moving from permitted into zoning board approval. So which do you wish, gentlemen?
C1E ordinance.
And see, I was, I was going to ask if we could just make it clear that all C3 and below was conditional by ordinance?
It's fine with me.
I mean, that's sort of what Nick's bill does.
Say that again. Well, wait a minute. Oh, this is your bill. Would you like to, don't forget to vote for it.
So you're saying from C1 and C1 VC all the way to C3, those others, they're permitted, you want to make it conditional?
By ordinance. Alright.
Okay, I'll second it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that C1 and C1 VC, C1E, C2, and C3...
Is all conditional?
All are conditional by city council ordinance for retail goods establishments with alcohol.
Okay, so you moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kraft. Right singer votes, yes. Kraft?
Yes.
Kraft, yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch, yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Wonderful yes.
She said a wonderful yes.
Okay, we'll get the signs down, we'll be looking in.
Wonderful yes. Mosby?
And nobody will be there.
Mosby, yes. unanimous seven yes. That motion passes. That takes care of that page.
Okay.
We're at, we're at page...
Okay, so...
Page 13.
C1.
We're now on page 13.
Still on table 10, 301.
Councilwoman Clark?
Okay.
The IT, yeah, the ID number is T602, place of worship.
I'm sorry, what do you, wait, one minute, please.
Page 13.
I, she wrote it in for you, but she didn't write it in for me. It's, yeah, but thank you. But I, it's, what is it?
Where's this at?
Um, it was on that sheet, but I didn't, where was it?
I meant to add, where would I be at?
I can't. Where am I? 602?
602.
Okay, sorry. I have, alright, 602 has three items. I'm only doing one, the others have already been handled. So move to amend, so that places of worship, which are, are left blank in C1, C1 VC, and in C2 require zoning board approval. These are commercial districts in neighborhood locations.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Law Department?
I think we'd have a constitutional establishment clause problem with that motion, because you'd have to sort of group people, not in groups of those that worship, but you'd have to have like all assemblies. You could sort of outlaw by building size, or outlaw by, you know, some other thing, but you can't just say, people can't come together to worship, but they could come together to, you know, cut coupons or something.
Council, are you messing with God now? I mean...
Don't tempt me to respond.
Planning?
She's, um...
I do know that we...
I'm sorry, what are you saying, that we can't?
You can't treat places of assembly differently, I think is the sort of terminology in the rulebook.
This, this rule would have, would only apply to people praying or worshiping. So we would have a constitutional problem with that. If you wanted to sort of make conditional or something, all buildings of a certain size, or all, you know, some other use category, that'd be one thing, but you can't constitutionally tell people that they, they can't worship in a place, but you could, you know, all show up to cut coupons together, you're fine.
Why do we have it in the code? Let me go back to basics. Here's my problem.
The church of what's happening now.
Yeah, and so basically, as long as there's space, that's fine, but it starts to get overcrowded. So if we can't make any decision about places of worship, why are we putting them in the code as a category?
It's not that you can't make decisions, it's that you can't have the, you know, permitted somewhere and not others. You could define them and then say they all can't be pink or something. I mean, you can make other zoning type decisions, but you can't just permit people to congregate together to do something and not to worship. I mean, here you're basically saying if you're, if the use of your property is worshiping, we get to say whether you can do it. But if you want the same...
Code.
Right, so there could be other reasons that are okay for that definition to be in the code, but it can't be whether or not you're allowed to worship, which is what your decision is. I mean, you could have them there defined as places of worship, and then you could do something like a building height for them, or, or something else that doesn't say, yes, you may worship, or no, you may not. And allowing them as conditional versus permitted is saying people can gather to cut coupons, but they're not allowed to gather to worship unless we say it's okay. And that's why this issue is, is a problem. It's not that you've defined them or made rules about them for other reasons, but this rule would say if you'd like to worship, you have to come and get your government's permission.
Councilman Henry, then Councilman Kraft?
I was going, I, I share, I share my colleagues frustration with this and have run into this on multiple occasions. One of the things that we can do, but which the council has not previously shown a willingness to do, is we could, through regulation, make it harder. For example, for the off-street parking requirements for a church are one space for every four seats in the sanctuary, and then the zoning board is allowed to do a variance of up to 75%. And so you wind up with situations where people will have a sanctuary that holds 500 worshippers, and then they were only required to have 125 parking spaces, and then they could get away with only 25% of that. We could, we could have stricter ratios and acknowledge the fact that we no longer live in a society where most people go to church, pour to a car.
Hillary. That sounds really great, except there's a current Supreme Court case on the same issue. They haven't decided yet, so I just want to let you know, in the Supreme Court case, they're looking at whether non, whether restrictions on only abortion clinics to make them conform to certain theoretically neutral standards has the effect of making those particular people less like, less able to get an abortion clinic building than a similar type of medical use that isn't related to abortion. So I'm just, I'm caught, I want to be very clear. You can define something like a church, and you could do things that, that perhaps don't make it harder for them to worship, but you're gonna be crossing perhaps a line, I can't say how the court will obviously vote on this, but you're kind of inching towards a line that eventually someone may say, you know, your restrictions on churches are unconstitutional because you are allowing people in the same size building to assemble and do other things, but you're not allowing people to assemble to worship. So I'm just putting that out there.
I mean, you know, I can use Conkling Street as an example, near Eastern Avenue, where you have the Odd Fellows Hall, you have the Army Reserve, and you have, you know, whatever type of church it is that's in, you know, one of the storefronts. If we put a restriction and said you can't have the place of worship, then you wouldn't be able to have the Odd Fellows, and you wouldn't be able to have the Army Reserve, because we were saying you have to treat them all the same. You can't single out the church, because then you're singling out something that is, for religious purposes, purposes of worship. And so that's, that's what you can't do. Is that correct, Hillary?
Yes, and also let me be clear, I mean, you could define places of worship and do, say, the opposite of what Councilman Henry just said. You could want to promote them because they are so sacred and allow them, you know, one parking space for every church. If you were just trying to get them all there in droves, that wouldn't have a constitutional problem, because that wouldn't violate the establishment clause. So there are reasons that could be seen as legitimate to define a place of worship, but forcing them to get a conditional use approval in order to worship would probably pretty much be struck down.
Let me make, I'm withdrawing my motion.
Okay, motion...
I would, wait a minute. What, why, now I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why did the draft?
Microphone, microphone.
Actually, I'm using it. Why? Alright, now I'm asking this. I didn't start this, I read the chart, I read the table. The houses of worship are there. Therefore, why are, we're telling them that they are subject to the zoning code by putting them in as a terminology?
Laurie. I'll answer that question. I'll answer that question. There are zones that expressly prohibit places of worship, and at the same time expressly prohibit the other places of assembly. So they're being treated the same. For example, your heavy industrial zones do not permit that. It's a conflict, a safety issue with having a lot of people in a heavy industry zone. So where you have other places of assembly prohibited, you can prohibit churches for the same reason. You just can't treat them differently. So in order to be able to prohibit them in heavy industry, you've got to define them, and you've got to put a use table, and that's why they're on the table and across the board as permitted.
Are prohibiting houses of worship in this code?
Yes.
Right.
Well, then.
You're prohibiting everything else.
Your amendment is making them.
Can't have a lodge in those same zones. You can't have a tavern.
Right.
You can't have anything where people assemble, except where they work.
No, but to be quite blunt, the problem with your amendment is you're making it conditional. You're asking people to come and check with the government if they're allowed to worship.
So I should just prohibit it. Take it out.
If you wanted, if you wanted to prohibit them all across a certain district, you could, but I think that the issue, it's clear. Right, you'd have to prohibit the other things as well. For, the reason it.
Wait a minute, I'm not, look, I'm not against houses of worship. I'm needing that, I wanted them to go someplace so that if they have one parking space behind a storefront, and they have 500 members, the zoning board might say maybe they should get valet service or something. In other words, I'm trying to, it's about parking. So, but, look, you know what? Forget it. But this is, this is why people roll their eyes who didn't.
We have a motion to withdraw. Do we have a second?
Yeah, let me take it out. It's not that big a deal.
Yep, you have to deal with it in parking. Okay, do I have a second? Or a motion to withdraw?
Give me, yeah, help me.
Yeah, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
But, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
The, the, the question I still had that I hadn't had a chance to ask.
Go ahead.
If we do treat all places of assembly the same, can we address the issue of cumulative parking impact? Can we, can we say that, you know, because there is already this place of assembly here, and this place of assembly here, and this place of assembly here, that another place of assembly that tries to locate, whether it's a place of worship, whether it's a movie theater, whether it's a restaurant, that there's just, we've already used up all the off-street, I'm sorry, we've used up all the on-street parking for this area, and there just is not room to add something else that is going to claim to use on-street parking?
Well, I think you could address parking for buildings or uses of a certain number of people, and say if any building that has, you know, is used by more than whatever people, you know, in their general parking way, I don't know that you can then prohibit, I think it would do the same thing. You would just word it so that you're, I don't know how it works exactly under the current code.
There are standards, you know, in the standard section on places of worship, they may not be as specific as what you're looking for, but page 230, 14332, talks about more the design standards, the location, the lighting, the entrances, exits, parking, et cetera, that you have to consider.
What I'm, what I'm talking about is the situation that Councilman Craft described, where you have one hall, another hall, and you have a storefront church on the relatively small area. If another place of assembly, be it another storefront church, be it any, anything that is going to have, you know, 20 or 30 or more people at one time, all trying to park in that.
Yeah, I understand your question.
Can you, can you add a distance requirement?
I don't know of a way to do that, particularly at the zoning board. Each case and address is taken up individually. If they are meeting their required parking, then they're meeting it, and they're not going to the board. If they are not meeting their required parking and are asking the board for a variance, certainly the fact that there's, you know, five uses in that block that also don't have their required parking, would be a unique circumstance that the board would have to hear, but I can't speak.
Could we put it in, could we put it in the code that?
I don't.
You can't, you can't have a place of assembly within 100 yards of.
At a distance standard.
You know, another place of assembly, or within 200 yards of two places of assembly or something.
Don't forget, your places of assembly include your public schools or any other schools, so that might get tricky.
Well, I don't know how that would work practically. I defer to Laurie. I don't know, if it, if it makes it harder for churches to exist in a way that, you know, schools aren't, that's fine, but, I mean, I think if you're saying for each building or use of a certain size, there's this kind of parking requirement, I guess I, you know, if the parking's already taken up by those around it, then it's going to be hard for any additional people to find parking. So I think you would accomplish that with your existing parking, but, I mean, I could be.
Council, Councilman Craft?
But.
Councilman Craft? Councilman Craft?
So, but the thing is, that the parking spaces on the street are public parking spaces. So they're not allocable to these three different, you know, places of assembly. So you could put a fourth place in, and they could say, you know, I just, I have just as much right to those on-street parking places as they do, you know, so if you're going to require parking, then, you know, you got to allocate that among all of us, because no one has more right to the public spaces than I do. They may have been here 100 years, I may be working in this block today, but we all have an equal right to those parking spaces, and whoever gets here first is the one that's going to use them.
Okay, so there, there was a motion to withdraw?
Curd parking is considered, you know the parking. I just want to say one thing.
Well, let, Council, I want to, the thing is, there was withdrawing.
I've withdrawn this, but I want to say something.
What I'm trying to say here is that I'm not trying to be rude, but we got to tighten when we're making these motions, we're never going to get, finish these tables. The bill's been withdrawn, the amendment's been withdrawn. What is the purpose of keep discussing it then?
Because everybody else was, and I started it, so I'd like to say something.
What I'm trying to say to you, Cat, we're like having a hearing on something that we already withdrew.
Well, we just had 10 minutes worth of conversation after the fact.
That's what I'm trying to say, that we keep, we got to tighten it up. We keep on discussing, discussing, we have to withdraw. We have to a vote.
Being discriminated against, but that's fine.
So at this time, we're going to, we're going to recess until 2:00. Thank you.
All right, so here's what I was going to say.